The official meeting now for Smith County is now in session. Honorable Mayor Jeff Mason present.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Stewart, would you raise your hand?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just humbly bow before you tonight, dear God, and would just give you the thanks and honor, dear heavenly Father, for allowing us to be here once again tonight, dear heavenly Father. Dear heavenly Father, we just pray that you come be with us tonight, dear heavenly Father, and lead and guide us in the decisions that we make, dear heavenly Father, while we attempt to conduct the county's business tonight, dear heavenly Father. Dear heavenly Father, we just lift the ones up to you, dear heavenly Father, that may be sick or shut in or affected by this COVID amongst our community tonight, dear heavenly Father. Dear heavenly Father, we just ask you to come be with this great nation, dear heavenly Father, and heal this land, dear heavenly Father. Be with us, and dear heavenly Father, wrap us in love, dear Lord, as we battle through this pandemic that we're dealing with at this time, dear Lord. Dear heavenly Father, once again, we just ask you to be with us tonight, dear Lord. We are so thankful for all the many blessings you've given us in our life, dear heavenly Father, and all these things who ask in Christ Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Join me to play. Play allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Stacy, we can do a roll call. Can everybody hear? Can you hear me? Nice volume.
Shannon Green.
Here.
Lynn Reese.
Here.
Terry Gibbons.
Here.
Billy Bass.
Here.
Greta Kirby.
Here.
Jason Stewart.
Here.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Here.
Dalton Pascal.
Here.
Shannon Meechie.
Here.
Erica Eagle.
Shannon is in Wisconsin and her cold, wet weather back there.
Ron Schumay.
Here.
Ron Cowan.
Here.
Linda Nixon.
Here.
Eddie Stow.
Here.
Roger DeW.
Here.
Charles Kent. Bill Reese.
Here.
Tommy Vane. Joey Nixon.
Here.
Dennis Hackett.
Here.
David Gross.
Here.
Frank Witter.
Here.
Item number five is the approval of the national 2029 meeting. Does everybody have the chance to go over those? Motion to approve.
Approve.
Shannon. Shannon Green. All right, I have a motion to say. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Ah.
Opposed? And it's our approval is ready. All right, number six is the announcements. In the package, people will see a resignation letter from Commissioner Daniel Cripps and Commissioner Dustin Della Haye. We will try to fill those either in August or September, depending on how. I've still got a question for the attorney and the election commission on how we need to do that. I believe to do that in August or September. Item number seven is amendments to the agenda, approval agenda. Yes, sir.
Three items I'd like to add to the agenda, please.
Okay.
I'd like to add resolution six, that was in the handout passed out. I'd like to add the cash flow for the 2021 budget to pass out in the handout.
Okay.
Like the third item to discuss moving our meetings to the AG Center until this pandemic ceases.
Okay. All right, I have a motion for a budget amendment, resolution zero six, for cash flow and for moving following meetings to the AG Center. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Stewart. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Ah.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any to the? All right, we'll move on to the county mayor report. First thing I want to talk about is, I don't know if you saw it on social media today, but Mr. Fred Key has retired, resigned from his position as our BSO. He has some health problems and he just don't feel like he can feel that right now. We have interviewed a gentleman and going to get him hired in, he came recommended by Fred. That is a very important job in this county. And the shoes are going, Mr. Fred will be hard to fill in that job. Mr. Fred is going to stick around as much as he can, as health allows, to help Fred get started. So just wanted to update you on that. And my intention is, is in August, we will do something to commemorate Fred, his service here. So next is our, I'll do a quick COVID update. We are at 185 cases since the beginning of this in March. We're right at 100 active cases in the county, 83 recovered, and two deaths. As you all know, we had to wear masks tonight. That decision came down from the Tennessee Supreme Court that all of your court facilities, you must wear a mask inside though. So that is, that is the reason you see all the masks in here tonight, and part of the reason why we're asking to move the meetings to the AG Center in the future. Friday before last, Governor Lee passed down to county, to local county mayors, the ability to put a mask mandate on their individual counties. I saw council prayed and thought about this as much as I possibly can, and just at this point in time, I'm not going to do that for our county. Not going to mandate masks. I asked that if you can, wear a mask when you want, when you can, but as far as mandating that to the county side, we will not be doing it. It's, there's a couple of things there. It's, I think you're overstating some boundaries as far as personal liberties, and also enforcement would be a nightmare on that end of that. I wouldn't ask Sheriff Eugene to even try to do that, because hell, are you going to pull that off in a rural county? I mean, it's different in the big metropolitan areas, but here in Smith County, trying to enforce that would be.
Impost.
Yes, sir. And that's, we're just, I'm just not in a position right now, but I feel like we need to mandate that. I just wanted to clear that up with everybody and get that out there, that we will not be mandating masks in Smith County. Talk about our budget year end. Our funds and cash balance, we ended it, ended on June 30th with $220,000, including reserves in the bank. When you take out reserves, we're somewhere around $1,740,000 fund balance. With that kind of cash in the bank, if we manage our spending for the first three or four months, we should not have to borrow a tax anticipation note in Smith County for the first time in a long, long time. So I am very, very proud of that as a start. Just a couple of things that we did do this year that's helped that is we did put a purchasing policy in place on how we purchase items now. Daisy and I meet about every other week, maybe weekly sometimes, on to review our financials. We talked about where we are as far as cash flows, so we keep an eye on that. You guys did pass a resolution back in August that we meet monthly now, so you all also can consider to review the financials. That was part of our corrective action plan that we had to file with the state compteroy's office last year. You also passed a resolution that mandated that we have to start the year with at least 30% of our cash in the budget to start every fiscal year, which that kind of, we've not got there yet, but we're working to get there, and hopefully that's coming soon. You know, partners did a good job of managing their budgets this year. The offices that did not ask for bonuses this year were the Office of County Mayor, Accounts and Budgets, EMS, Pressure and Deeds, the Election Commission, the Highway Department, and Property Assessor did not ask for those. One other thing that was, that came before you and came out of the policy meeting, it's something I started working on when I first got here. The Drug Coalition is, has graciously agreed to move their offices to the old courthouse. That way, that frees up office space so that Miss Sherry, our HR representative, will have her own private office. When I came into office, it's one of the things that I noticed that coming from the private sector that just blew my mind away, that we didn't have that kind of privacy for her. So we, we tried to figure out a way to get that done, and this was the best chance of getting it done without tossing as much money. So right now it stands Stacy and I will be moving down to the Drug Coalition office and then shifting around in offices where I'm at and Daisy's office. All right, that takes care of last year's budget, let's talk about going forward. All right, so 2021 budget is basically a no growth budget. It does have an increase in it, but I'll tell you one. All right, so there was an, there's an increase in elected officials for the salaries and have to come down from the state. We paid the minimum that they tell us. There was some data processing software agreement increases. There was a 5.4% increase in employee insurance benefits that we decided that the budget finance approved, that we would eat that cost this year for our employees since we weren't able to give raises, we would eat the 5.4%. I think it was somewhere around $28,000, that is worth that increase total to us. Next year, we'll have an increase in election costs because there's two elections in this fiscal year. Our liability insurance went up a little bit this year. One of the things is a grant, there's a 100% grant in there, there's no max, but that goes in and shows it's an increase in your budget. So it's not, it's money in, money out, but it shows on the bottom line it's increased. Our longevity probably increased a little bit this year than it always does, as every year. The trustees commission increased due to an accounting entry that was off the true cost on that, so we got that straightened out, straightened out. Our tax relief went up just a little bit. And also ag extension is, went up, their budget went up, and that's passed down from UT for the services in the county. The University of Tennessee sends that down, so we didn't have any choice in that, and one of those unfunded mandates of that. We were able this year inside the, some of the county building budgets, the fairgrounds, the AG Center, the crop parents, the planning office, and we did, we were able to cut about $106,000 total out of those budgets. Some of the things that we look forward to working on this year to continue to get us to be the most efficient lean government as possible is where there's more to that purchasing policy that we're going to try to transition to this year as far as going to full centralized purchasing, and even to the point of having a central store for everyday use items that everybody would use. Something that I've been debating as well and talked to other counties about is fleet maintenance, where we centralize our fleets and centralize that vehicle maintenance. That's something I want to try to look at this year. Resolution zero six is part of the governor's one-time money that he's sending back to the counties this year. Smith County will receive at some time coming down, July 31st, $820,000, $820,350. That's what got pushed down to us from the governor and those in their budget. That money was, when it first started, our park was $656,000, but there were restrictions on what you could spend it on. When the legislature reconvened in June, they changed it and actually upped the money up and took the restrictions off. So that's something that you'll see in that legislation when you get to P. I said all that. Also, we are per budget forward, budget finance recommendation, we are looking at doing a salary studies like a top plan, so that will be part of next year's looking at. Also, we did, we got our ADA audit done, just have not put a cost to what that's going to cost this year. Scared of that for just a little bit, but we will, we'll tackle it how we have. Again, that's another one of those, and that's a federal mandate, unfunded mandate that we pushed down to us, so we will be working on that. I said all that to say, if the economy does not fall off the rails, and all indications are it's not, we should be, we should have our three-year goal complete in two. And at that point in time, next year, we will have some decisions to make on being able to give money back to the taxpayers or shifting some money to possibly help on the roadside. That's, that's my goal is going forward right now, that's what I'm talking about, and I hope you guys can, we work together and get some of that good stuff done. Quick update on vacant property. Engineered firm Farmer Morgan approached me about three weeks ago and said, Mayor, there's EDA money out there. The federal government is spilling all kinds of money at this COVID, and we think we can go get you a grant to do the whole project. And I said, that's fine and dandy, what's that going to cost me? And he said, well, it won't cost you anything on the front end, we'll like our money on the backside of engineering and oversight. And I said, so if I don't get anything, if we don't get the grant, it don't cost me nothing? He said, nope, don't cost you nothing. I said, well, we'll go that route and make the decision from there. So that's where we stand with that. Some of the good things that have happened and are happening, we did get a new business into our industrial plant back in March. The tornado tore their building in Wilson County up because they were raining, and so they had to move. They ended up buying a building in the industrial park, so American Foundation Services, a dentist company, we were proud to have them. With all the pandemic and all this going on, we've not done a full-blown ribbon cutting or welcomed them. And when they hit the ground, they were so far behind in their work, they did not have a chance to screw up either. So in the last couple of weeks, we've had some really good industrial recruiting visits, so we're excited about some things that may or may not be coming. I can't really get into details on that yet, but hopefully soon we'll have a good investment happening. I'm sure a lot of you have seen downtown Carthage, it's kind of changing, and there's a lot of stuff, good stuff going down there. A young man has bought some businesses and go bring some businesses into downtown to hopefully re-energize it and get more people coming into there, and that'll be great. If you'll notice, Gorantle has got a new building and a couple of new businesses there, Star Physical Therapy, some young, some, I don't know, young or mine, entrepreneurs built a building there and recruited some folks here. DTC is moving their business there. There was Big Farm, so Saturday morning was when some tracks that hopefully somewhere down the road will make things. You know, more businesses, recruits more people here, and that helps, helps with everything, those things. That's, that's the end of my mayor's report. Any questions, I'll answer those, and we'll move on. All right, next is committee reports. Go on, go in there, there's your rubs and bridges, any questions on that? You got the meetings in your packet? All right, we'll move on to new bids. We're going to go down to letter E, resolution. Your first resolution is resolution zero seven 202001, and if you sell a vehicle to a foot, in footpath highway department, you have a list in your packet that goes with it, which is a J. Center. I would take a motion to approve that.
Take a motion to approve.
Motion by David Gross.
Second.
By Frank Witter. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution zero seven 202001 concerning surplus equipment. Any discussion?
Yes. Go ahead.
Go ahead. The last, next to the last item, concrete stock gap.
Yes, sir.
I know there was three commissioners in this, in the same district, received an email from a lady stating her was damaged during some road work and she needed a new stock gap put in. I emailed the highway department and got some answers, but to me, why sell a stock gap if we're needing a stock gap replaced?
Let's see, you have that question.
Whatever we're selling is in terrible shape, it's not usable. It's just a stolen, they're trying to buy somebody to deal with on the road for it. I told her to be with that woman today. How'd you reach her after the fact, Frank? Was your friend okay, did she tell you that?
What's the timeframe on getting the stock gap in?
I want to know if you'll get the PO number, distribution agent's job.
Any other discussion, questions? All right, we'll do a roll call, second.
Shannon Green.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Meechie.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stow.
Yes.
Roger DeW.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Dennis Hackett.
Yes.
David Gross.
Yes.
Frank Witter.
Yes.
All right, item number two under resolution E is resolution zero seven 202002. It is fiscal year 202021 budgets for funds 101, 122, fund 31, fund 41, fund 43, 151, 156, and 207. They are on pages 14 through 93. It also is in your packet, you have the county's own budget, county's 15 balance sheet, the debt service payments for funds 131, 151, and 207, and on page 99 through 25, is your estimated fund balance. I would take a motion to approve the budget as written, they all come with positive recommendations from both sides. Linda Nixon, motion to approve. Second by Dennis Taylor. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the budget as written. Any questions or discussions? If not, roll call, second.
Shannon Green.
No.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Meechie.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stow.
Yes.
Roger DeW.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Tommy, he's not here. Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Dennis Hackett.
Yes.
David Gross.
Yes.
Frank Witter.
Yes.
All right, item number three under letter E is resolution zero seven 202003, and that is making appropriations for donations to our various organizations. This is exactly the same thing we passed the last year as far as after all the other items were filed, each of the items will be available for donation. I would take a motion to approve resolution zero seven 202003.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Jimmy Winfrey, second.
Second.
Second by Lynn Reese. I have a motion and a second to approve, any questions or discussions? If not, roll call, second.
Shannon Green.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Meechie.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stow.
Yes.
Roger DeW.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Dennis Hackett.
Yes.
David Gross.
Yes.
Frank Witter.
Yes.
Resolution zero seven 202004 is making appropriations to various departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Smith County, Tennessee. And it's on page 106, page 20. I would take a motion to approve. Frank Witter. Frank Witter. Second. Second by Ron Schumay. I have a motion and a second to make the resolution zero seven 202004, the appropriations. Any questions or discussions?
Mayor, I do just have one question. 58-400, 58-900, amount of $309,000, $244,000, so the other charges miscellaneous. I'm just curious of what the other charges miscellaneous and almost half million dollars there is.
The majority of that is liability insurance, workers' comp insurance. I think longevity falls in there, a couple of those categories.
Got you.
If not, if not, category for those kind of things. And it looks, I heard, but it's really missing some.
I figured it did, I just wanted to clear that up.
Any other questions? Just go ahead. All right, roll call, thank you.
Shannon Green.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Meechie.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stow.
Yes.
Roger DeW.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Dennis Hackett.
Yes.
David Gross.
Yes.
Frank Witter.
Yes.
All right. Item number five is resolution zero seven 202005. It is set in the tax levy in Smith County, Tennessee, for the beginning year of July 1st, 2020. It is set in the tax levy of $2.73, the same as it was the previous year. Motion for, motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Terry Gibbons. Motion approved by Joey Nixon, second by Terry Gibbons. I have a motion and a second, any discussion, questions? If not, roll call, second.
Shannon Green.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Meechie.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stow.
Yes.
Roger DeW.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Dennis Hackett.
Yes.
David Gross. Did you say no?
No.
Frank Witter.
Yes.
All right. Resolution zero seven 202006 was handed to you tonight as a amendment, budget amendment for the governor of the county. We put money in certain categories. There you'll see 911379, public sector projects, that is to purchase the paper for shaking districts that we already talked about. 3335 is possibly probably work, that's money that we're not, it's probably going to end up being for EDA or building repairs. 714 is for highway and streets capital projects, that is for buying two side-by-side valid bush hogs for roadway mode, and also possibly a distributor, we put the money there to buy a new distributor for highway. And that comes out to $825,935. Those numbers are rough estimates, right, I don't know what normal, we get the POs back on the back, but that's kind of where we're at right now. I would take a motion to approve a pleasant amendment, resolution number seven 202006.
Approve.
Item number seven, two. Motion by Shannon, second by Eddie Stow. All right, I have a motion and a second for that resolution. Any questions or discussion? If not, roll call, second.
Shannon Green.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Meechie.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stow.
Yes.
Roger DeW.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Dennis Hackett.
Yes.
David Gross.
Yes.
Frank Witter.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, the next one would be the add-on of looming, we don't even go on the actual, it's very, it's very, uh, annoying. Uh, next one would be, uh, looming all future meetings to the Ag Center to allow for better social distancing. Uh, and do this. Indefinite to listen, don't let me go out quick, move back. I'd say I'd take a motion to move all pre, all future meetings to Smith County Ag Center.
So, do.
So, wait by Joey Nixon.
Second.
Second by Shannon Green. Uh, all those, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve. All right, next item is letter F. It is the notaries. You have listed notaries before we, uh, will take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
As you said, Dennis Hackett, second by Dalton Pascal. I have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, not reasonable, approve. Number eleven, any, any other business? Not, I take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by Frank Woodruff, second by Shannon Meche. All those in favor?
Aye.